Good morning. It's February 24th. It's 10 o'clock. We call this meeting to order. Call to order, Ed Hawkins?
Here.
Tom Bloom's here. Elvin Callen's at the National Association of County Nico. And he's representing us and doing a great job. At this time, I ask you to rise for a moment of silence and then pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we have a number of items from the county administrator.
We have 15 exonerations this morning for 3,167-17. Fiduciary orders of February 24th, 2016. Statement of services for fiduciary commissioners Cynthia Van Stafford, Lynn Crane, and Georgia Armstead. General county vouchers, 52,689-6. Coal severance, 7,500. 911 cash, 3,189-41. Chestnut Ridge Park, 540-45. Kent Muffley, 8291. For a total of 63,993-73. We have one budget revision request from the Mon County Planning Commission. Move funds from their contracted services to capital outlay in the amount of $755. We do not have any new employees to introduce this morning and no position vacancies for boards and authorities.
Move to approve.
And second, we're probably moving to secondhand discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes. Okay, so I'm sorry, no positions at this time. We will move to the public portion. At this time, I'd ask you to rise, state your name, your address, and you can speak on any issue you want at this time. Public portion's open. Would anyone like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. And we have a number of people here, so this'll look forward. I think this should be an excellent program today for the citizens. Okay. Citizens for Parks and Trails, revisions for Parks and Trails levy as suggested by State Auditor's Office. I believe Ms. Beeling is here just to...
Yeah, I'm up here just to answer questions. This is the one that was presented to you at the last commission meeting and has been revised with proper language.
Well, the last time I did question what I view possibly as exclusion, and particularly when I see that now there is another request from youth baseball in the Potomac Gardens, it is, and the commission is aware that you were assisted by Commissioner Bloom in this endeavor.
Yeah, he attended the meetings.
Yes. It was a pronouncement that the commission was not to be involved in the preparation and support of these levies that Mr. Callen made. You were aware of that, correct? It was during the general meeting beforehand before you broke into groups?
No.
Okay. Then my question is to you, do you believe that commission sanctioned Mr. Bloom to help you?
No, I feel like he was a representative.
That's my only problem with this...
Would you let her answer? Excuse me, she was answering.
Go.
I think he was here as a representative for Parks and Trails Recreation. So, I didn't feel like he was serving as a commissioner. But I didn't realize the conflict.
Well, there may be. That's why I'm still going to move to approve, okay? But with stipulation that at least be looked into by the ethics commission to see whether or not there's a violation. If there's no violation, this does not be a contention, okay? I'm not looking into that. But I know what Elvin said before, that we were to have no participation. That you chose to voluntarily participate may or may not be a conflict of interest. And I don't want it to conflict with the progression of this. So, I would move that we accept this and go forward and that be the end of it pending the fact that there is a review and make sure that this is perfectly on the up and down.
Okay. I'll second that. I do have some questions too for you. To make clarification purposes, I plan on asking questions for each levy, so that way everyone has a better understanding. Just for clarification, this is the exact same levy that was passed last week except for editorial changes.
That's correct.
Yes, okay. In today's paper, the city manager is concerned that some of the levies may appear that the city residents would not receive the benefit from a levy. Would you please explain what the city resident would receive?
Yeah, so this park levy has included in it the Morgantown Ice Arena, which was provided by the Bo Park Board is what they wanted to see included. And that's a for additions and upgrades on the ice arena, which is heavily used by the city. Also, it includes Mon River and Deckers Creek rail trails, which just this past Saturday with a pretty day out, we were having trail counts of over 150 people per hour. So, this levy would help us with keeping the trails safe and operating them. And that includes both in the city and outside of the city. But honestly, I think that recreation doesn't see city and county lines. I think people in the city recreate in the county, and I think people in the county recreate in the city. So, we hope that it covers enough different types of recreation that everybody will know that.
Okay, I have one more question. When developing a levy, it appears that you tried to reach all areas of the county. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, I mean, the group was basically came out of that one public meeting, and we did try to reach out to the city and county parks to get their feedback and their numbers of what their priorities were. We also, you can just tell by the number of groups and the different types of recreation that it covers across the county, different types of facilities and parks.
Okay. There's one other question. Call for the question. All those in favor of this levy being placed on the ballot, say aye.
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 That is with provision.
With the provision. And I'm more than willing at this time to explain. Mr. Callen had his own opinion. I not only called the State Department, but I also had called with a witness. Renata McClure was in there when I talked with Ora Ash. And I specifically asked the question, in any way am I allowed to participate as an individual? And he said, not only can you participate, but we even have commissioners that go out and promote it. He then said, the only thing I could not do was use public funds or time or materials. I just want to ask one question. What time were those meetings held?
They were in the evenings. I think always on a Tuesday, I believe.
It was a Monday, a Thursday, and then a Monday?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. But that is correct. It was at 6:00 to 9:00 o'clock in the evening. And was it also clear that also I was there not only as trail, but also because I was saying at tennis? You know, I wanted to make sure. I'm with him, Willan. I look forward to the, you know, for you to investigate. I specifically made it clear, and I referred to, they even refer me to page eight of this specific items that Ora Ash said that you have no problem whatsoever because it's not on the ballot yet. And I'll read. Governing bodies should take particular care that groups advocating the passage of levies or bonds operate strictly within the law. The governing body and its employees not use public funds, time, or materials to advocate the passage of the issue. Since it wasn't part of the, it was never approved, I'm allowed as a citizen to be a part of that. And that, as he said, resolved many conflicts when levies came before them. So, I look forward to that being said. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Jeff Smell, Country Roads Leasing and Morgantown Early Learning Facility. Is he here? Is there anybody here from Morgantown Early Learning?
That's me.
Oh, okay. Why don't you have a seat?
Thank you, thank you.
If you could give your name and, good. If you both sit up front and give your name and address and then explain what's going on so that the public, oh, perfect time.
I'm Carrie Lacy. So, I'm the director at the Morgantown Early Learning Facility. We are a preschool facility here in Morgantown that's been in operation for 34 years. We have, we provide care for children ages two through 12 years old.
My name's Jeff Smell. I'm the owner of Country Roads Leasing. We assist government agencies in obtaining financing to acquire equipment. We've been in conversation with Morgantown Early Learning Facility about the acquisition of two school buses, transportation buses to get their kids to programs and whatnot. And we're asking the commission to assist by acting as a conduit so that the Morgantown Early Learning Facility can utilize their 501(c) theory tax-exempt status and get a financing with a tax-exempt interest rate. The county commission would be the lessee in it. And in the agreement, the Morgantown Elf would be the sublessee responsible for repayments, insurance. All rates and responsibilities would rely on the sublessee. So, we were asking today if the commission would be willing to assist throughout the process. Part of that process would be holding a public hearing, which we could do during a regular business meeting.
Okay.
And then adoption of a resolution to enter into the agreement for the financing as well as the sublessee agreement.
Well, my son is a graduate of Elf.
Oh, great.
And I do support the program. I think it should be understood that we are simply a pass-through here.
That's correct.
In no way does this complicate any funding from the county. This is entirely, but they need the government agency to be this, and I would so move to approve.
And a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and thanks for helping with the situation.
Do you want to go ahead and set a date for the public?
Oh, yeah, let's set a date as soon as possible.
Are you ready to do that?
I need to get the notice of the figure, but we can gather on that because it'll need to run about 14 days.
Okay.
So, we'll get together next, this coming week.
Just coordinate that with them.
Yeah, coordinate that with them, and then we will put it on the agenda.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Is Mike Wolf out here?
No. He asked Tim Boy. I was going to come in.
Okay, well...
He said he might not be able to come in, but he did give me the names of the companies that did submit proposals.
Okay.
They received three for the 911 computer aided dispatch system. The first was the Versify Computer Systems. The second is, I don't know how to pronounce it, Z-U-E-R-C-H-E-R Technologies.
Zooker.
And the third is Spillman Technologies.
Okay.
They will be reviewed and shared with the Mecca 911 Policy Board for final decision.
That's good. Moving quickly. Okay, Morgantown Public Library, you have the floor. Oh, wait, may I apologize? No, Montague County Fire Department Association. I'm sorry, I crossed, I'm sorry, I was really, sorry.
He's moving right along here.
Yeah, I was moving, I'm way ahead of myself.
Here, I'll type up a letter here.
Again, if you give your names and, yeah, just show your...
You already have a copy of our, of our levies, so that's just like a cover letter. My name is Sandra Christopher. I am the secretary of the Montague County Volunteer Fire Departments Association.
My name is Bob Brooker. I'm the president of the Montague County Volunteer Fire Department Association.
Okay. On behalf of the association, Bob and I are here to present a fire levy to be voted on at the primary election made at 10. The five-year levy would provide annual funding of $688,689 and a five-year total of $3,443,455. Using the same example that we've seen in the paper for the transit authority, and I believe the parks, if your real estate was valued at $200,000, assessed at 60% of that, our rate would raise your taxes $10.08 a year. If your class three property, which would be your vehicles, your trailers, and things like that, assessed at $7,400, it would raise it $1.24. So, we thought that was a pretty reasonable amount. This levy would provide approximately $50,000 for each of the 12 volunteer fire departments, $50,000 for the hazardous incident response team, which we call HRT, $10,000 for the brush fire team, and $15,000 for the county fire association. Now, the fire departments could use that money to pay their insurance and workers' compensation, their, you know, building expenses, their fuel maintenance. I mean, there's a list of ways they can use that money. Back in 2014, we came up with a proposal, and I had each of the fire departments submit a list, or like a budget or total expenses. And at that time, insurance and workers' compensation on the average, because I took the total and divided by 12, on the average, cost $28,500 a year. So, $50,000 is not going to really go that far, but it will help pay the expenses. We asked for 50 for the hazmat team because right now they have two vehicles, a 1989 and a 1990 response vehicle. Those are over 25 years old. They would like to at least get a newer vehicle, a response vehicle for the hazmat team. And with that $50,000, hopefully, they would be able to come up with some type of a vehicle. Thinking on the brush fire team, they could buy brush fire equipment that could be used by all the departments, and they do have one response vehicle. And with this money, they could possibly buy another response vehicle. Because sometimes you need more than one. And as far as the association goes, we're responsible for doing the repairs and maintenance on the two county tankers, which runs, well, it could run different, but this year it's around $6,000 so far. And we've been working on our three radio towers for several years now, and we have spent quite a bit of money. But this is an ongoing project, and this money for the association, a lot of it would go toward our radio towers and trying to get our communications set up better because communications is an important factor when we're responding to calls. But I think, you know, the fire departments, they do provide a valuable service to the residents of the county. We're here 24/7. We don't get paid. We are volunteers. We respond to anything. You call us out on, we're going to respond to it. Doesn't matter, not necessarily, you know, fires, you know, you have structured fires, vehicle fires, but then like Bob says, you have rock slides and trees down and whatever, they're going to turn out a volunteer fire department. So, and I read the article in the paper at this point from the city, and I conceded their point. I can see where they're coming from. But people that live in the city go outside of the city. And if they have a wreck on the Grafton Road, they're going to get a volunteer fire department. If they have a fire at the town center, they're going to get a volunteer fire department. So, it's not like they're not going to be using our services. But I understand where they're coming from. I know what they're, what they're saying. So, we're just asking the commission to support our fire levy so it can be put on the ballot.
Do you have any comment?
Now, add to what Sue said. People really need to understand, over the last few years, the duties of the volunteer fire departments has increased immensely. And, you know, I say now, if you can outline online, you're probably going to get a volunteer fire department. It's that simple. And it doesn't matter what the call may be. You know, it could be little Johnny's dog fell down over the bank, grandma fell out of bed. Those type of things, we go out on. And those type of calls, we can't charge. We can charge for a structured fire. We can charge for a fire wreck. Everything else, we cannot charge for. And all 12 fire departments can tell you, the majority of our calls aren't structured fires, and they aren't car wrecks. Majority of our calls is just everything else that you could imagine. You know, we've really got to try to make people understand just what the volunteer fire departments are doing. And, you know, now we're trained right up there with the Bay Fire Departments, with the training that's required by the state and the federal. Yet, we're all highly trained. And it just, it takes a lot of money to keep things going.
Is there a motion?
I will go ahead and move that we accept this. Keep in mind, the motion that we have made prior to this is subject to any revisions that may be required. In other words, after review by the state auditor, okay?
Second, do you have any questions?
Not really questions, just more or less comment. I do attend the department's meetings on behalf of a mission appointed to do so. And I think another thing that needs to be brought to the public's attention is the need for volunteerism. We really are, money is one issue, but if you look at the average age of the volunteer fire department, and that's offense to the individuals that I see here, that indeed it is harder and harder to get younger people involved. Talking with individual chiefs, usually they may see on a good year between one and two new younger individuals coming into a volunteer fire department, and that's no way to make up for the population that is not aging out, but is certainly finding it more difficult to go on these runs.
Yeah, well, we have started a recruitment committee, and she's, she's running, she's really taking charge. She's going to get a hold of the schools and get into the high schools.
I did see that in other counties, there are junior firefighters associations in four and a half.
We are attempting to get some younger people involved.
Yeah, I just have two general questions. Just could you explain, in your levy, it does not state how the funds will be distributed. You want to just explain the procedure and how the money is planned to be given to the group? Just sort of clarification.
Well, we really haven't discussed that, but I was under the impression that since you give us money now, and what we do is we either pay it and turn our wishes in to get reimbursed, or we send it in for the county to actually pay, that that would continue. I didn't...
That's fine. I just want to make sure so everyone knows that is the procedure.
Yeah, well...
I believe that's, yeah, that's what we're going to do anyway, is to make sure that we're on the same...
Yeah, well, I knew the money, I knew I was going to get the money in my hand.
Well, that's, you know, how people suddenly take the wrong. So, I wanted to clarify. Okay, there is one concern that the commission has received numerous times, and I'm just wondering if you have an answer at this time. Certain volunteer fire departments have come to us and said that they are busier and cover more calls for services. Will they receive the same amount of money a company? And as you're, I don't want to answer your question. Okay. That's a question that comes up. How should we...
Yeah, this question has come up numerous times over the years. And, you know, the bottom line is, yes, certain companies may answer a lot more calls than other companies. I'll call the other companies the smaller fire departments.
Right.
The smaller fire departments, the only way that they can grow is increased funding. Okay? They have, the smaller departments pay the same amount as bigger departments when it comes to buying equipment. We, you know, you don't get cut any slack just because you're a smaller department. So, the fair way to do it is each and every department receive the same amount. And, you know, for years, we all have been receiving the same amount, and we've tried to make do with that. So, to me, I feel that each department should receive the same amount, and hopefully these smaller departments can get their equipment caught up to standards. Because like Sue said, in 2014, we had 20 fire trucks in our county that was 15 years old or older. Those trucks have to be replaced. And with the growth that you have in this county, a lot of times, you'll have to take a smaller engine that's old and go to a bigger engine, which you're looking at half a million dollars. So, I just, we felt that this was a fair way of doing it. Each department received the same amount.
Yeah, that's my thought too. I mean, just because you don't make as many runs, that's not a basis to funding on.
I think one other, at least, point that should be made aware is that the, some of these smaller have a larger area to engage. In other words, obviously, Cheek, I mean, I can name them. Cheek Lake, Brookhaven, Westover have a greater population center. But obviously, those that are in the western end of county, Blacksville and Wadestown, have a much larger area to wish to respond to.
Well, and also, I want to point out, like, Cheek Lake gets a lot of response for donations. But you take Blacksville, they don't have the population out there that they're going to get as much. So, I think you need to take that into account. I really think the smaller departments need the same amount of money in order to keep up with mandates and their equipment and things like that. I mean, they need their money just as much, if not more.
That's fine. I just wanted, so we have to get a discussion because I have a feeling you're going to have too much of that discussion.
Yeah, we're going to hear it. We've already heard it, so, but we're going to hear it.
Okay. Let's have a vote now. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It will be put on the levy on the basis that will be sent down to Charleston Review to make sure it meets the standards, whatever they...
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your hard work. Now, I apologize. Now, we will have the Morgantown Public Library, and we're right on time at 10:25. And again, I didn't mean to slight your volunteer fire department. I just...
Oh, that's all right.
They now sometimes miss things on that.
Can I go this way?
Good morning. Could you state your names and address, if you would?
Sharon Torma, I'm the director of Morgantown Public Library.
Penny Few, I'm one of the trustees of the Morgantown Public Library.
Okay. How can we help you?
Due to the anticipated shortfall of county funds and after the public meeting...
Quiet, please. Gentlemen, please. Thank you.
Due to the shortfall of county funds and after the public meeting, our board of trustees has decided to pursue a levy in the order to continue the library services throughout the county. Those services, in case you haven't been in any of our libraries recently, are free internet access to all people, free Wi-Fi, of course, our typical books, movies, and audios, our electronic resources, most popular, which is the deli, our huge number of programs in which we had over 12,000 people participate in last year, and meeting room space for other nonprofits throughout the county. The funds that we are asking is, will help us maintain those current services, and we've asked for a little bit more in order to put our hours back that we have reduced in recent years due to low funding. We want to continue to keep up with the technology in today's world and make sure that our citizens have access to that technology. Those things may include what we call microspaces, 3D printers, that type of thing, introduce the public to those. And we have been wanting to start a teen program for a number of years and have not had the funding to do that, so that would be one thing that would be on our plate. We are asking for $442,730 per year for a total of $2,213,650 over the course of five years. On class two property, we're asking for a little over half a penny, 0.54 cents per hundred. And using the same scenario that everyone's using on the $200,000 home, that would be an additional $6.48 tax for the homeowner. We are asking the commission to approve our levy to go before the voters on the May primary ballot. Thank you for your time, and do you have any questions?
Well, before I went to dental school, my degree is in English literature, so I have every book that I've ever purchased right back to iRobot, as it has to call. And I can tell you where it is in my libraries. So, I do appreciate what you do bring. I think the consideration should be made that this is not, even though you are called the Morgantown Public Library, that you do have satellites in, I know, in, you do go as far as Blacksville in the western end of county, but at Cheek Lake and in other areas. So, it is more of a service to the public, not just the Morgantown area. Therefore, I would move same stipulation that the levy be approved or placement on the ballot, subject to review by the state auditor, and any corrections that have to be made.
And I'll second that. Do you have any other discussion?
No.
Okay. I just said I have a couple of questions, and there's one that concerns me. It says, "The funds you request are only covering a little more than the county portion. How would you respond to the city manager's concerns that the city residents will not benefit from your levy and will be paying more?"
We are a countywide system, and we have been sharing. County money does come in to help support the Morgantown Public Library too. So, if this would not pass, the city library would be affected just as much as the county the county libraries. We share materials, we, we move them around in our private vehicles. If somebody downtown wants something that's at Blacksville sometime during the week, someone will go and, and get that book for them. So.
Good. I, we just want, these are the kind of questions that I ask. And the other was, was there a reason why you didn't add the city's donation to it?
We felt that at this time, we did not want to be a burden on the taxpayer.
Okay.
I, I just, I was so afraid that, with being faced with four or five different levies, that it was going to be a burden for each individual agency to, to try. And I think all the levies are important, so we were trying to ensure that as many could pass as, as possible.
Okay. Fine. Do you have any other questions?
Yep.
Call for the question. All those in favor, put it on the ballot. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it will be put on the ballot.
Thank you both.
Thank you for your time, hard work. We appreciate it.
I have one for last name.
Colleen Coon-Grants. Colleen?
I have one for the community development block grant and the reimbursement for $873.60. And I also have one for the JJDP in the amount of $1,721.37.
Do I have any?
Motion to approve, big signature, present pro.
Okay. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will sign. I need a blue pen. Thank you. Okay. Peter Gignanbot, youth baseball and Botanic Garden.
Hello.
Morning.
I'm also here with Dave Barnett of the Botanic Garden. I heard on the radio last week, I think it was Commissioner Callen had said that let the people decide on these levies. And it may appear that perhaps our levy request is better suited to be on parks and recreation. It didn't work out that way. We put something together and presented it to you, and we hope that the voters can make a decision on it, one way or the other.
Do you want to explain just roughly where the money and what?
Sure. It's a very modest levy. It asks for $105,000 per year for five years. $25,000 of that would go to the Botanic Garden for continued maintenance and improvement, not including salaries. Their president, Bill Johnson, asked me when I was drafting this levy to make sure that I put that language in there that it wouldn't go to salaries. The baseball request is for $10,000 per field. These are Bow Park fields. That number was based on what I saw in the Wrexham Park levy, which amounted to be $10,000 per field for four fields in Westover. So that's how we arrived at it. And I, I did a calculation. I'm not perfect at math by any stretch, but on a $200,000 house, I estimate that it'll be about a dollar and 25 cents per year extra if the voters pass this baseball fields and Botanic Garden levy.
I do move that we accept this and place it on the ballot, again, subject to the provisions that were stated before, that it be reviewed by the state auditor for any minor corrections that might be necessary.
I second for discussion. Do you have any questions?
Uh, no, no questions, just comment. Particularly with, with the work that I know that is done, the Botanical Gardens has grown out of a, a strong volunteer base, and baseball is very important to me. Okay? And we won't quote Minoso, but I can't.
That's very good to me.
Yes, ball has been very good. I'll quote it then anyway. I think that it is a good opportunity, and I hope that it will be well received by the public.
As I said, I have some questions. Does the Morgantown Pony Baseball Association own those fields?
We do not.
Okay. Did Bow Park approve at any meeting your request? Yes or no?
Bow, Bow Park, I, let me answer it this way. I know that the Bow Park members were informed that this would be presented. I gave it to their executive director, and she sent it to the members. I've spoken to one of the members. I don't believe there was ever a formal vote. It was presented as an administrative matter on which action wouldn't be taken. More importantly, there have been no objections. I've heard from no one, neither Melissa Birch nor any other board members, to say that they didn't want this to go forward. But it was not, I am not aware of an actual formal board meeting by Bow Park where they specifically asked for this. I brought this as a private citizen and as a member of Morgantown Pony Baseball League, as its vice president of operations. These are fields that we play on, these are fields that, that need these funds, and this is the mechanism that we've made the decision to bring it forward. In the drafting process of levy, I was contacted by the Botanic Garden president, Mr. Bill Johnson, and my thought at that time was, yes, we would, we would certainly join with you. I don't want you to miss the opportunity. It was too late for us to join the Parks and Rec levy. I don't know how Westover got on there precisely. Somehow they were invited to a meeting. I don't remember seeing them at, at the sheriff's office the night I was there, but when I saw that Westover Fields would get $10,000 a year possibly, I thought Morgantown needs to have that opportunity as well.
Okay. Second question. Does the Botanical Gardens own that land?
No.
Okay.
The city owns it.
Okay.
We lease it, 25-year lease.
And here's my problem. I don't know how legally I can even approve this levy for several reasons. I have a letter here from Bow Park Board, and I'd like to put it in the record. And I want to read it. This is my concern. They have, oh, here's a copy if you want it. I'd like to make this as part of the record. "February 11, 2016. Dear Commissioner Bloom, thank you for the invitation to participate in the upcoming excess levy as part of the Parks and Recreation Group. Our board recently met at a special meeting. They met at a special meeting to discuss project or projects that the Bow Park would submit for inclusion and the important funding device. The decision was made that Bow Park would request only one project for inclusion, that being the upgrades, improvements, and additions to the ice arena. As you know, this facility is one of the major revenue generating aspects of the Bow Park system. At 36 years of age, it is long overdue for the attention needed to allow it to remain a viable asset for the next generation of individuals, families, and community members and leagues. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this group and your commitment." So I have a letter and a formal letter that says they do not want this, and they are the people who own it, so I have a concern on that. The second concern I have is that I believe that you brought up about Westover, and I'm really glad that the mayor is here, because I want a clarification. May I ask you, may I ask him a question? Your honor. Because, okay, the question was, when you participated and you requested those funds, was it for Westover Park Fields? Explain what, why you were there and you attended the meeting.
It was for the upgrade of the fields, not for West Mon Baseball or, yeah, Baseball League. It was for the fields in our park, so we could facilitate any type of.
So it was as for Park? It wasn't for a specific?
For the park, huh. Not for the league.
Okay. Thank you. Because I want to get that clarified. Also, for the record, I want to present, we had three meetings, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There are nine members who were on that committee, and we all signed in. What I want to show specifically, and was asked, you asked earlier, Ed, about was anyone excluded? Let's take a look at the nine members. Three of them supported track, the Midland Track. One was me that was supporting tennis. The Westover mayor was there. We had one individual supporting the Mon County Fair. What this group decided was what I believe, and as Ella Beeling said, in the best interest of the county. This was an open meeting, it came from the other groups. So therefore, I have a real concern of putting money, well, I, I have a concern putting this on the levy to distribute funds of properties that you do not own, and specifically, Bow Park has made clear that they have not, they are not interested in, and you didn't get approval from the city either. Is that correct?
No.
Okay. So I will not vote for this levy. My question is, Ed, what, what is your opinion? Does it goes against what we were required to do legally?
Well, we'll have a split vote.
May I, may I comment?
Sure.
Your letter from Melissa Birch is dated February 11.
Yes.
I contacted Bow Park on February 18, and it was after that. And I know, and I can tell you from speaking to Ms. Birch yesterday, that the board was sent this levy. And while there may not have been a formal vote, it was presented as an administrative matter, and I've received no comment or objections to the request. I can't imagine that Bow Park would in, in any shape or form refuse or want to vote against the potential to fix these fields, which are much needed for the youth in this area. This is just simply a matter of fairness and, and reasonableness. No, we don't own the property, but I'm not aware of anything in the, in the code that says that we have to own that property. If there is such a thing, then I don't want it to go forward. But I would ask that you pass it with the proviso that it's legal.
Okay. And, and I strongly object because I have a letter here from Bow Park. I spoke with members of the Bow Park. They did not have a meeting. This was the reason why they could not be a part of the initial meeting that the county commission had until Bow Park met as a board and approved an individual to come to the meeting. Then they came to a meeting with a specific proposal. So therefore, no, I mean, and just to give you a case in error, you're then telling us to give funds to another government agency and improvement. Well, say what happens if the improvement really was 50,000 that was needed to fix the fields, not 10,000. I have a real concern of us overreaching our authority on this, and this is not legally correct, and I will not support it.
We stand deadlocked.
Well, then, well, we have called, I call the question. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. If fails 1-1, it will not be put on the ballot. Thank you. No. I'm sorry, sir. Well, no, because if I open it up, I open it for everyone.
Well, what's the problem with that?
Because I'm not, well, okay, Ben.
I have no problem.
Okay. Chuck, go ahead.
Three minutes.
Chuck, tell me who you are and you may.
My name is Rick Landenberger, 55 Mandel Street, Morgantown. I just want to say that having participated in this process for the past several weeks, it's pretty clear to me that these kinds of issues that you just discussed here could have been alleviated if there had been more proactive engagement of the community to get involved and resolve these kinds of issues. We would know exactly what Bow Park's position is, and we wouldn't be talking about, did they say this, or didn't they say that, and when was the letter submitted, blah, blah, blah. This whole thing, to me, suggests a pretty significant dysfunctionality in budgeting at the county level. That's my statement.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Okay. Do we have any correspondence?
Actually, I have an item for the, the transit levy that you all approved two weeks ago.
Oh, yes.
That was submitted to the auditor's office, and they did come back with some revisions. Mr. Bruffy, I told him it really wasn't necessary for him to come today. But if you have further questions, I mean, we can bring him in next week. But the auditor has looked at this, and he has approved the format. Numbers have not changed, they're the same. So it's just in the proper format now, so it's for.
Yeah, I think we better just to cover.
We do move to accept the revisions from the.
And I second for the transit levy. All of it, any discussion?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Okay.
I have some more correspondence.
Correspondence, yeah.
I have, well, I have one, well, okay, we'll do it in order, sorry. Request from Clear Mountain Bank from Donna Thomas-Hart about releasing a secured depository funds, FNMA 3136G0XA4, and they're going to replace that with a different security because it's, I guess, above the threshold. So they're going to release, release that with a replacement of, of another. Just need the commission's approval for Eldon to sign.
Move for approval and allowing the president to sign the release replacement.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we have a requisition for payment number three from the Star City Tiff Project. It is a payment from the Administrative Expense Fund for $3,993.28 payable to Steptoe and Johnson.
Move for approval.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the last one?
The last I have is a request from Janet Kandirsky from Wesbanko. They are our trustee for the Mon County Justice Center. We, last week, you all approved a payment for $400,000. Since our last payment, the president of the commission has changed, which is now Eldon. So we, they just need a new resolution that he is the authorized person to sign. So just need you to approve that resolution today.
Move for approval of this resolution.
Second.
Allow them to sign.
Call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
That's all.
Okay, good. And, okay, unfinished business.
I do not have any.
I have one item that I thought we wanted to promote. The county commission, a couple of weeks ago, approved the franchise agreement, and we now, because of that, are able to offer, and I'd like to keep this in our office if anyone's interested in Ben, and the media can use it, we, we now can offer high-speed home internet for $9.95 for eligible families.
We're not offering it. Comcast is offering.
Comcast is offering, but we, well, we are able now to prove, provide it in the county. Okay? So we have this available, and it will be at the desk, and I'll hand out the sheets and collie, and we'll have it, but I just wanted people to know that. We are not offering it, again.
Sorry.
It is Comcast, but we are able to promote. Okay? Thank you.
I don't have any.
Oh, okay. New business.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, new business. Okay, good. Reports from elected officials? Do we have any elected officials who'd like to say?
Date.
Is it date?
No.
Oh, I saw you raised your hand.
I started with, I guess, this.
Oh, wow, okay. Okay, no other?
No.
Okay, good. Reports from county commissioners?
I did be, I did attend the Extension Services meeting. That was last Wednesday. I am the designated appointee to that particular group. This was for their budget presentation and approval, and their budget was in line with the decrees. Exciting, the only thing different was the 2% mandated raise on the, on the rent. Okay? It's the only real difference between the last year and this year's request. Thursday morning, I also serve on the CBB board, and there was a brainstorming for a, I believe, what's going to be an exciting event. I'm not going to announce it right now because the plans and dates are not really set in stone for this, but hopefully in the fall, we will have another good event for the county residents. This weekend, of course, is Empty Bowls. That's Saturday at the Midland Events Center, I believe, from 11 to 2 or 3. Don't quote me on the end, I'm certain of the beginning date. This is a great event for the food pantries. If you haven't been there, please plan to attend. But indeed, after that, you might want to join me for the Polar Plunge. That is coming up, and I will be dressed up and ready to jump in to the Among the Hill River for the Polar Plunge. I'll be the Jack of Hearts you'll be able to find me. Okay? So that's what I have.
Thank you. A couple of issues. One, I know there's been a lot of question and concern about why we had to coda levies. I think it was clear that the three county commissioners explained of the loss of the coal severance. We had a general meeting, and out of that meeting came different groups to try and see what would be in the best interest of the county. Now, just figuring out and calculating roughly, if all four levies are totaled, a person who owns a $100,000 house would pay a total of $28.44 a year. That breaks out to $2.37 a month, or 8 cents a day for a $200,000 appraised house. That would be 50, now, again, this is rough, but we'll have to figure it out. $56.88, $4.74, or $16, or 16 cents, 16 cents a day. Basically, what we're looking at is, if a $100,000 house, you're looking at a soda. A soda a month. soda a month. And I think we in this community now have the opportunity, it's now for the residents to decide. I believe the commission has done what they were supposed to do, and again, even if it is passed, when it passes, it doesn't go into effect for 14 months. So we have an upcoming year that I know Ed and I and Eldon are meeting on Monday to start the process of 90 different agencies that have requested $2.6 million, and as of right now, on coal severance, we've received $540,000 with one more payment coming. So again, I do want that. The other thing, no, I won't even talk there. Basically, that is it.
Move to adjourn?
Move second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. To adjourn.